Do we know if it's Dina's?
Ms. Hoover? Ms. Hoover? Want me to keep going because she's on?
Yeah.
Ms. Coyle?
Here.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Mr. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Ms. Steckety?
Here.
Okay.
Um, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with public comment. Um, we have one public comment from Tim Palladon. Go ahead and step up to the mic, yep.
And I apologize, a longtime resident, first time attender of the Board of Education meetings. I don't know what's been decided yet. I was looking through the documentation for tonight's meeting. I don't know. Has, has the decision been made that the mask mandate will be within the schools or is that up for discussion tonight? Okay.
It's on the agenda for tonight.
It's on the agenda. I just, I just wanted to comment in support of a mask mandate for, for the children within our schools. Um, you know, this was something that we all went through last year. I know that the Delta variant is continuing to push us back into a form of remission. Um, as far as, you know, what we're doing within the public sphere. So I just wanted to voice my support of, of a movement towards the mask mandate for the children. Something that we all went through last year. Everybody's used to it. It's such a minimal level of, uh, such a minimal thing for us all to partake in to help ensure everybody's safety. Um, I saw some of the documentation saying that no level of child endangerment is acceptable. And I just, I want to say that I certainly appreciate and I would echo that thought process. You know, my, my wife and I, you know, we spent the last year, she took time off work to help us raise the kids in, in, in this time. And I know not everybody has had that option and I know we're not going to have a remote option or at least one hasn't been discussed for this year. So if we're all going to be back in schools, I think that's just a minimum thing that we can all as a community kind of agree on or work with. So I just want to say I, I support that. I hope that the board kind of makes that decision and I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we might have one other public comment. Um, Dana, are you looking to comment now?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Dana Hayjack.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I like ran out of the shower. Get over here, but, um, sorry catching my breath, ran up the stairs. Um, I'm Dana Hayjack. I will have students at Miller, Manning, and Westman Junior High next year. That's still weird to say, but I'll have kids at three of our four buildings next year. I also had the privilege to work at Miller School for the five weeks that we did return to full day in-person learning. I'm grateful for that opportunity. Thank you to Mr. Wyler for thinking of me when that position opened and giving me an opportunity to really see what happens, the ins and outs of a school day. It really kind of enlightened my thinking and supported some of the ideas that I had and other ones, not so much. I learned a lot. So I'm here today to advocate for full day in-person learning. You may be thinking yourself, we've already said we're going to do that. And I am grateful for our district for prioritizing full day in-person learning and I support it completely. In order to keep moving forward with our students being in-person learning from and with our amazing staff, it is imperative that we follow guidance set by all the local and national public health entities. Namely, I'm here to advocate for masking of all students and staff in the district so that we may achieve our goal of maintaining full day in-person learning. It has been said multiple times by administrators and the board that the priority is to provide full day in-person learning. I believe this priority is shared by most, if not all, parents, students, and staff. Throughout the pandemic, for the last 16 months, our district and administrators have followed the guidance of public health entities. Mr. Carey has cited them at every meeting since March of 2020. We've gotten familiar with acronyms like CDC, IDPH, DCHP, because Mr. Carey has cited them for us at every meeting. All of these entities now lay out guidance as to how to mitigate and control the spread of COVID-19 while also prioritizing returning to and continuing in-person learning. Our district has continuously followed this guidance and as a result, we have done just that. We have also successfully kept our students in the classroom since January and have avoided major outbreaks in the district. Yes, we've had cases. Yes, we've had quarantines, but we have not had uncontrolled spread within our buildings. There is not a single public health entity that advocates for optional masking for students and staff at this point. Not a single medical agency advocates for allowing students back to in-person learning in the fall as COVID-19 numbers are on the rise nearly everywhere, including our own community. Without mitigation efforts in place and at the top of the list is masking. They do however advocate for consistent in-person learning. They say to achieve this, mitigation efforts must remain, namely masking and ventilation. We have a responsibility to our staff, students, families, and greater community to continue to follow public health guidance, to prioritize maintaining in-person learning, and to protect the vulnerable. I know teachers personally who have had to deal with severe health outcomes, even deaths. None of us want that for our community. We can't make any activity risk-free in a pandemic. But we have a blueprint in front of us as to how we can best avoid severe outcomes while also prioritizing the education and wellness of our students. Returning to in-person learning with optional masking would most likely be no different in our community than it has been for those who have already started with optional masking. A quarantine of a classroom or multiple classrooms or a school pivoting back to virtual learning and then back in in-person, how many times back and forth? This would not be in our best, students' best interest and all the public health experts are in agreeance that our best way to try and avoid this is to go back to a mask policy for all. I've never known a great educator to disregard information clear and important like this. I strongly encourage and ask the same of our board. Follow the facts and knowledge shared with us by highly qualified individuals. We would never invest in curriculum that was not backed by data and research and given to us by professionals in the relevant field. Why would we do anything different here? I thank you all for your commitment to our school community. I truly, truly do. Your job is not easy. And for the emotional energy all of you have put in daily to get our kids back into school. Please take care of yourselves, your health, your mental health. It's going to be another draining year, but we're going to make it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is discussion and information item, which is the opening plan for the 2021-2022 school year.
And since our July 20th board meeting, there's been some changes in the DuPage area and I'll highlight some of those as I review some of the information. We always start with our guiding principles since we began this, uh, over a year ago. And, and again, maintain the health and safety of our students and staff is our, one of our priorities. We've also now added that we're prioritizing full-time in-person learning. And I think, and I'll reference this again during the presentation, but a year ago, if you remember, our meetings, our presentations were about what our remote model looked like, what our hybrid model looked like and how we're going to make decisions when we can be remote and when we can be in person. And we're not even having that conversation. You know, we're focused on bringing our students full-time in-person. August 18th is the first day for students. At the same time, we want to do that safely. We want to make sure that we're providing meaningful, engaging academic experiences. We're addressing the social, emotional needs of our students. We know that coming back off of last year that there are some of our students who are going to need that support. We want a consistent, stable model so that we're not doing that flipping back and forth and that we continue to provide professional learning opportunities for our staff. The things that have changed since our last meeting is now DuPage County is in the substantial level of transmission. At the end of June, DuPage County was minimal. Around July 9th, it transitioned to moderate and then around July 27th. So not too long after our last board meeting is one trip to substantial. What is triggering that is the new cases per 100,000 is at 70 for the seven-day average. The positivity rate is at 4% currently. Just as a reminder, and I have this slide a little bit later, but we, we've been using the CDC transmission levels as our, as our guide and this is what DuPage County Health Department, when they determine when we transition to substantial, uh, substantial level. There are two main criteria. That is the new cases per 100,000 and then the positivity rate. It only takes one of those to change the designation. So because we're at 70 for 100,000 is what puts us at the substantial level. The updated guidance from the CDC, the Illinois Department of Health, DuPage County Health Department as well, and the ASBE is again, we're, we're still talking physical distancing of three feet. Last year, if you remember, was six feet, but this year it's three feet. Before it was a recommendation of masks being optional for students who are vaccinated. Now they are recommending that masks, masking for students and all employees went indoor at our schools for all of our buildings. Again, we know that these entities make recommendations. They can't, um, they don't have the power to, to mandate it. But they're making strong recommendation that schools follow the guidance. Masks again are required in public transportation. So that's our school buses, that's our activity bus, it's also our driver's ed cars. And then again, the contact tracing is when students are in close contact for more than 15 minutes, less than three feet apart. There were a couple of questions that came up at the last board meeting that I do have some of the responses for. In regards to our students who have IEPs and, um, you know, the, the masking, overall, there were no significant issues with masks. In some cases, students were allowed more frequent mask breaks to accommodate their needs. There were some cases where shields may have been, have been worn in order for speech and some other services. And then in some cases, maybe at the early childhood, where there was even a doctor's note saying that the student would have difficulty tolerating a mask. The staff worked with the student on, that is one of the goals, is working with the mask. And so they, throughout the year then, they worked with them on being able to tolerate the mask. And so it really wasn't an issue. We will again have the quarantine room in case a student gets sick while they're at the school. And then, um, you know, students who need to be quarantined will be treated similar to any student who had a long-term absence. The students will be provided work and then at the elementary level, similar to what we had last year, I know if the board recalls, we had tutoring for students, um, remote, um, that we're also looking at that model again to provide tutoring for our elementary students so that there's some interaction with staff. There was also a question about the shield testing and they had a meeting yesterday for the superintendents about the shield testing. It's a saliva test and these samples are collected in a vial. Schools receive the results in 24 hours. If we enter into an agreement with Shield, it's about a three to six week onboarding process to get the agreement signed off on and then set up the, the testing. When a student or a staff member needs to be tested, they cannot eat or drink for one hour prior to the test. And you can test about 40 to 60, 60 people per hour. So that kind of gives you an idea when you think about our school enrollments, how long the process would be if we decided to go that route. The testing is free for school districts. If a district can, has 100 tests, and that's district-wide, it just doesn't have to be one school, but if you have 100 tests per week, then Shield will provide a third-party administrator at no cost. And so that third-party administrator would collect the tests. They would be responsible for getting the tests transmitted to the, to the lab. They also contact positive cases. If you're testing less than 100, uh, it's not cost-effective for Shield to provide a third-party administrator. But Shield will reimburse the district at $8 per test. That'll offset the cost that the district would have. But we would be responsible for getting those tests to the lab facility. And again, the students would need to quarantine if they tested positive. And again, we would treat it similar to our long absences, long-term absences. Shield says that there's three options. Option one is again, the weekly screening. If you're at 100 tests per week, they provide the third-party administrator. You can also have a weekly, weekly testing program. But if it's less than 100 or if the school district opts to do it, they can, uh, the district can do it themselves. And again, the district receives $8 per test. And there's no minimum requirement on the testing. And then again, the staff collects and delivers this, the test. The third option is outbreak testing preparedness. Another change from last year, if the board remembers, last year, if there was five positive cases, let's say in a classroom or on an athletic team, um, that was considered an outbreak. Now it's two. So again, it's a recognition of how contagious the Delta variant is. So if there's two positive cases, that's considered an outbreak and then that possibly would mean a classroom would have to flip to remote or possibly a building. And so if you partner with Shield for the outbreak preparedness, then you can have, again, students tested, staff tested, and possibly, you know, reduce that amount of time that the building would have to be, have to be remote. The current vaccine status hasn't changed much since our last meeting. For DuPage County, currently the 12 to 17-year-olds are eligible and 68% have received at least one dose and 48% are fully vaccinated. They're saying now that the under age 12, so five to 12, they are anticipating, uh, late fall, so October, November, that the vaccine will be approved for ages five through 12. The Page County Health Department did add in that if now we expand the population from five to 17, from 12 to 17, because you're adding all those new students who are not eligible, we're less than 30% vaccinated. So that gives you an idea of the number of students who are between the ages of five and 12. Where we're at in terms of what that does to the vaccination rate. Again, in terms of our opening plan, our commitment is to return to full-time in-person instruction for all students. Right now, there do not be a remote option. Again, those families that their child qualifies for a medical exemption, we would work with. Those, um, students on a health plan. Students with still certified for, or as I mentioned, certified for medical reason. Three feet physical distancing. We would continue our cleaning and disinfection protocols. And the, uh, close contact, uh, again, would be defined as less than three feet for 15 minutes. And we would encourage vaccination. Masking, um, we're going to follow the, I'm recommending we follow the CDC guidelines. And again, they're required on buses, school vehicles. Masking is required of all students and adults indoors. Mask would not be required outdoors and then mask would be required of all visitors to our schools. And then we would, um, the board asked to take a look at metrics to determine when possibly we would be able to relax, relax the masking requirement. Parents would monitor their students at home and symptomatic students would, would have to stay home. Vaccinated students who are asymptomatic would not need to quarantine. That's the, the new guidance. And then unvaccinated students who come in close contact with a positive case would need to vaccinate. And right now, we're, we're looking at rather than the, um, last year, we had the daily, parents would have to, um, submit that their child was symptom-free. We're looking more at kind of a blanket. And we could do it at the beginning of the year, beginning of semester, start of a quarter. The parents would agree not to send their child, if their child had any COVID-like symptoms. Why are we looking at a, a mask requirement? Again, it's because DuPage has transitioned into a substantial level of transmission. The Delta variant is much more aggressive. It's, has 1,200 times the viral load, um, of the, of the original COVID virus. And, um, you know, the talking points to Page County Health Department, as they said, you know, no level of pediatric death is, deaths are acceptable. And then, um, you know, even though students may not, uh, get as ill as an adult, they do know that they're efficient spreaders of the virus. And so there's that risk of students bringing the virus home. And if the parents are not vaccinated or grandparents, then that would, uh, it could be very easily spread to those adults. I am recommending that we still kind of use the CDC transmission levels. And again, big shift from last year. Last year, we were looking at them to determine if we're in-person or not. Now we're looking at masking. And similar to what we did last year, we will look at local, you know, locally where, um, we're at in terms of the positivity. So we can, can do that. But again, uh, it's the two things that we'd be looking at is the new cases per 100,000 and the positivity rate. Right now, the recommendation would be, and the board can discuss this, that if we're at that moderate substantial high level of transmission as defined by those metrics, that we'd have masking of all students and staff. If we wanted to at the low level, start to talk about making masks optional, one possibility, we could look at the vaccination rate. And if we have 70% of our students vaccinated, 70% of our staff vaccinated, then we could have masks optional. The, uh, you know, we can collect the data. We can ask for, um, the certification, uh, proof from parents for their children. Our nurses also have access to a database, so they can look up individual students as well. So we can collect that data very easily to know what percent we're at, uh, in terms of vaccination rate. And then as our elementary students become eligible, we can add that data. And just a reminder, when we were looking at this last year and we were talking about pivoting, it was whether or not we're going to be enrolled or in-person. And you would have to give families lead time because of childcare and some of those things. But in terms of masking or no mask, I mean, it's much easier for us to notify families, hey, you know, we're seeing again a spike. We're at the, um, substantial level, you know, we're going to go back to mask or, you know, the numbers have dropped and we can go back to mask optional. It's, it's much easier for us to, to make those transitions. And then the last piece of information, um, I have an update in terms of, at this point, um, almost all the school districts in Page County are starting with a mask requirement. On a meeting I had with DuPage superintendents yesterday, uh, the question was asked two ways. And so the first question was, how many districts are adhering to the CDC guidelines in terms of requiring masks? And so these districts listed are the ones that answered to the, to the positives. So Downers Elementary, 58 Marker, Darien Center, Cass Hinsdale, 86, which is the high school district, Downers 99 is the high school district. Winfield, Woodridge, DuPage 88, Medina, U46, Keeneville, Glen Allen, Bloomingdale, Attasko, they all responded to the positive. The question later on was asked, how many are not? And there were only two districts that answered that question. And, um, one is Wheaton, Unit District 200. They're kind of on the fence. They originally said optional, but now they're rethinking that position. And, um, the other is West Chicago is the other district. So, and again, there's all the districts around there. So no other district weighed in that they're definitely not. So I think it's safe to say that just about, it's going to be pretty consistent, DuPage County with the mask requirement. So that's the information I have for you. And then if you have questions or...
I'm assuming we have questions, so. I'm, I'm actually going to bounce it to the folks on Zoom first, just to make sure we get their thoughts in. Adina or Leah, we are, um, taking questions at this time. If you guys have anything you want to ask Kevin. Can you guys comment so we know you are there?
Here, I'll let Adina go first.
Leah, I think that was you. We're having a really hard time hearing you. So I don't know if you're like really close to your mic or if maybe we need to turn the volume up on the speakers in here. But I think you, you tossed it to Adina. Adina, are you there?
Yeah. Can you guys hear?
Can we get the volume turned up?
You hear okay?
We can barely hear you.
We can barely hear you. Is there someone that can turn the volume up?
Uh, Adina, they're checking on the volume. Hang on a sec.
Why don't, why don't you guys start? Going to say, why don't you guys start?
Kevin just stepped out of the room. We will as soon as he comes back. Adina, can you say something else just so we can test the mic? Adina or Leah, can one of you comment so we can test the volume?
Can you hear me?
That's better.
I'm being loud?
We can hear you, but it's still pretty.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but it's still pretty light. I think you just need to go ahead and...
You can hear really well back there.
You can hear really well back there? Okay.
Maybe it's our flexi.
So Kevin, stand back there. Hey. So, Adina, we have you, we have Kevin standing in the appropriate spot in the room to hear you. So can, Adina, can you go ahead?
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead with Mark one test nine.
Now it's going to pick up on these mics.
Go ahead.
Um, I had more comments and questions, but I'll start my, my questions with Kevin. Um, it was just regarding, um, with testing.
Yep, go ahead, Adina.
Would we need to hire a nurse or is we testing ourselves?
It depends on how we wanted to utilize the test. If we wanted to do something where we're, we want to test students on a weekly basis or on a regular basis, then we would either, you know, go with option one and, um, Shield would provide the staff that would be needed. If we wanted to do it just as, um, you know, there's a positive case and we want to just test the close contacts of that person so that those individuals can get back to school sooner, then we would be able to do that internally. We wouldn't have to hire additional staff. So it just would depend on to what extent we'd want to implement the testing.
So we would have to make a decision on random testing or just testing when, um, there's a positive case.
Right.
Is that right?
Correct.
And just, um, you may have stated this, but I wanted to... Is there a cost to the district at all for the shield test?
No, there's no cost at all to the district. Either they provide the staffing or if we use our own staffing, the district gets reimbursed $8 per test to offset the cost.
I'm going to stop there for now.
So Kevin, just one quick question attached to the shield testing. Are you recommending that or was that just information you're providing to us?
That's information. I think for our district, um, the, uh, the outbreak, you know, having a, a agreement with Shield... in the case that we need to do testing due to an outbreak, I think that makes a lot of sense for our district. I think, you know, just the, the time commitment, when you're talking 40 to 60 students an hour, to test all the students on a regular basis, I think that becomes unwieldy. So I think if we enter into a, an agreement with Shield where they will help us if we need to do in case of an outbreak, but then also internally, we can handle the individual testing if there's, you know, a need to test, you know, individual students to see if they've tested positive as a result of close contact.
Okay, great.
Is that a state provided? Like why? Oh, okay, great. And then, can you just clarify the two cases outbreak? Is that CDC or IDPH? Who made that?
Uh, that's CDC and then it's been adopted by the IDPH and Page County. Like it all went down the line.
Awesome. All right, just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Leah, can we go back and have you ask any questions you have?
Yep. So on the shield testing, what are the reasons to not do it randomly?
Again, I would, I, I'm looking at the time commitment for, you know, it takes an hour to do 40 to 60 students. And so, you know, you're talking, you know, in a, in a building, like the high school, for instance, you're looking at roughly in the neighborhood of eight to 10 hours of testing. So, you know, that's, you know, disruptive in terms of, you know, it's an individual student, so it's a few minutes, but you're, you know, you're disrupting classes by having students coming in and out of a classroom. And then, you know, if you do the math for the other buildings, you know, the junior high, you're probably looking at roughly about seven to eight hours for the junior high to do it, you know? So it's, it's just more the, the time commitment. Um, I think if we have the other mitigations in place, if we have the masking, if we have the social distancing, we're doing the cleaning, all those things, I think that will help us maintain in-person learning and then having the shield testing as a result, if we do have a potential outbreak or if we, again, want to test smaller groups of students to see as a result of close contact, they're positive. I think that makes more sense.
So is there a reason it has to be done in the school? Or can it be done by the parents or the families and brought to school on, on Monday, for instance?
Uh, that would be a question I'd have to ask Shield to see if they would allow the vials to go home with students and then be returned. That's a question I'd have to ask Shield. They did not offer that option when they did their presentation, but, and that question didn't come up, but that's a question I can ask Shield to see if that's an option.
Okay. And then for the outbreak testing, how is it handled for privacy concerns?
What, uh, what ends up happening is each student is, is, uh, you know, would be given a vial with a, with a number on it. And then a space would be designated where a student would, would go to collect the sample. They pass it off to the third-party administrator who codes everything. And then they in turn take all the samples to the lab. And then any positive tests, it's the third-party administrator who contacts the families of any positive tests.
And then, if I understand correctly, in an outbreak situation, that could lessen the amount of time close contacts would need to quarantine?
Correct.
Okay, so if they're negative, they might not have to quarantine for 10 days?
Correct.
And just to call out that the shield test is an antigen test and not a PCR test with the, so it doesn't have the high false positive numbers of a PCR?
Right. And their, their tests, they were explaining that their test actually, and probably Adina can speak to this better than I can, but their tests actually, uh, like test three different components of the saliva so that it is more accurate. And then as, if there is another variant in the mix, it's more likely to catch the new variant as well.
Awesome. And the last thing that I had for now was, have we thought about retaining the self-certification lanyard just to keep symptom checking at least for the beginning of the year top of mind for, for our families?
Um, we can do that. I mean, it's not, the, the thinking was, uh, because our families had been through this last year, that they're, you know, they, they understand that they cannot send their child if their child has symptoms. And so that's why we're thinking that we can go to one kind of generic sign off that, a commitment from our families. But we can still go back to the lanyards. It wasn't anything that was unduly burdensome or, or difficult to implement.
Awesome. I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay, other questions for Kevin?
I have another question.
Oh, Adina, go ahead.
Um, is it part of the shield option for, I guess, testing upon returning? Say their child became ill, not, you know, outside of an outbreak, but their child became ill, did they request testing?
Yes, it could also be used in those cases as well. So if a child is ill and a parent would like their child to be tested, it could be used in those cases as well. And that would be something that we would do the collection individually, then we wouldn't rely on a third-party administrator.
Kevin, on that note, what Adina asked, would we have a stock of the shield test in the building at all times then?
Yes. Yes, we would.
Um, can I ask a question on the school opening plan? And first of all, I, I just want to say once again that I really appreciate that we've added prioritizing the in-person learning. I think I've heard primarily even more so than from parents, but from students, my own, my own kids, my students that I teach, and we've heard from even some Westmont students that above anything else, they want to be in this building, even if that means that they have to wear a mask. And so I just want to make sure that the voices of the students are not drowned out in all of this. And then what I was hoping to specifically ask a question about is on page 10 of the back-to-school plan, the bullet point, the third one that says students who have a certified medical reason to qualify for homebound instruction will have an education plan. And so I know that some parents have wondered if there could be a certified medical reason as to not wearing a mask. I think the answer to that is probably no. But would they qualify for that third bullet point? I cannot wear a mask, therefore I qualify for homebound instruction.
There could, you know, it, it has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. There, it could very well go hand in hand. A student who medically is, you know, wouldn't be able to come to school also would qual, you know, qualified. But that would be something that we'd have to take a look at and review.
Yeah. I mean, I'm thinking specifically like, my anxiety with a mask is so debilitating, I can't be in the building. Would that qualify?
I want to look into that.
Yeah. I think that's something just to consider for those that might be in that particular group. That is my only question for right now. I have a couple of comments, but I'll hold off on those until before we make any decisions.
I want to follow, only because I'm on the same page and the same bullet point.
Okay.
So students who have a certified medical reason to qualify for homebound instruction, what about students who have? So the priority obviously is on full-time in-person instruction, which I'm so glad that is the focus. What about students whom, whose educational needs are directly negatively impacted by wearing a mask? And I'm, when I say directly, I, I mean directly. And I'm, I'm thinking specifically about the gentleman that was here at the last meeting who I believe is in the room right now, who mentioned that their child's educational needs are severely hindered by the wearing of the mask. And I don't know who else might be in that category, but I just like to know what we can do to make sure that education for that child means education.
Right.
Because, and, and are there, are there certified educational reasons for a child to be able to not wear a mask at some point during the day when they're, when, when that part of their education is negatively impacted by the wearing of a mask? I hope, I hope the question makes sense.
It does. And it, it, it would fall under, I think, two, two different categories. One may be a student that already has an IEP. And so then there's the possibility that wearing a mask could impact their, their education. Well, in that case, then our, you know, Director of Student Services would convene a meeting, you know, you'd have the, the parents there, you would have other members of the team, and they would determine what, you know, possible changes to the IP would have to occur in order to meet the, the, the needs of the student. And as I referenced, it was more at the early childhood level than I think any other level. But, you know, there, there is the possibility that, you know, a shield might be the accommodation, you know, in order for, if that's the, the reason. The other possibility is, you know, a 504, you know, and those are students that don't necessarily have a, an IP, but they, you know, we have students with 504 plans who have other medical needs. And so we need to make accommodations for them. And so then we develop a 504 plan. So there are ways that we, if there are truly medical reasons, then there are ways that we can develop plans to meet the needs of those students.
Medical and educational?
Right.
Okay. And the, the only other question I have, it's just a clarification. I want to make sure that I understood. Now the screen's gone again. The mask metrics, this was something I asked about at the, at the last meeting and I think, I'm pretty sure it's been answered. I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. It's low level of transmission as defined by the CDC and schools where seven, it's, it's an and, correct?
Right.
Okay. And schools in where 70% of students and 70% of staff are vaccinated, masks, masks can be now optional. So then maybe just one clarifying point. What, it, low likelihood, but what, what if those criteria are not met? In particular, I'm thinking about the second bullet, schools where 70% of students and staff are vaccinated. And perhaps both this, all the CDC, the IDPH and the DuPage County are all removing their, or, or not, it's not lifting because they're, they're just making a recommendation, but they're removing that recommendation. Does that, would that also qualify?
Yes. Yes. You know, I think, I think what went throughout this is, yes, well, you know, it's kind of like what we did last year. You know, the CDC, IDPH, Page County Health Department, we, we take our lead from them, you know, their recommendations. So if they, you know, right now, they ramped up their recommendations. If they...
Stay back.
You know, then yes, we would also then on our end do that as well.
I just want to, those are my two questions. And I, like Jess, I have, I have some comments also, but, but I'll save those.
Before we jump off, Kevin, can you just speak to who the parents can or should reach out to if they need to adjust their IEPs or 504 plans?
It, it, they can either reach out to the building principal. In the case of the IEP, they can reach out to the building principal or Linda Cloud, or the Director of Student Services.
Thank you. Kevin, I was just going to ask, I don't know if you can answer the topic. Um, this, you guys can still hear me?
Sort of.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Adina.
Students that require it, we've been through this for a year. I don't know if you can speak to, I don't know, a number of students who've already gone through such plans? Like we, we should know, at least for the kids that were already in school last year? Or, you know, if that, ask for that plan and already received it because of wearing masks?
I don't have that information with me, but yes, I would be able to get that information in terms of what students qualify for, for different plans. Because remote was an option last year, um, we, you know, families didn't necessarily have to go down the path of a medical certification. They could just opt for that. The ISBE this year, because they're stressing in-person instruction, they're not, I wouldn't say not allowing, but they're, they're recommending that there is not a remote option. And so that, that will be unique, that we will have some of our families who may pursue a medical reason for not to be in person. The masking, we did have, and I'd have to, like I said, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but we did have a couple of families, some families went through the medical certification process for no mask. In some cases, they were not successful. It wasn't the district, but it was the doctor. And again, parents had the remote option. So this will be a little bit unique because, you know, we don't have that remote option. So we may see an uptick in that request, but, you know, we do have the, a form that parents have to have filled out by a physician. And they also have to sign off that the physician can share medical information with the school district. So, but it was, it was pretty minimal last year, how many people went through the process.
You're saying that there were, the number may be higher than going to two this year, but, um...
I, I would anticipate, I would anticipate that because there's, there's not a remote option this year.
But we do have means and ways that teachers, you know, not reinventing the will, that they have accommodated some students who've had, you know, to have other ways of teaching done. So they've come up with ways that they would do that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions, Kevin. I just want to clarify the, um, on the mask metrics, first of all, are those specifically mask metrics or are those mitigation metrics?
They're, um, well, masking is a mitigation. And these, these are metrics to help the district determine, one, to require the mask and one to allow masks to be optional.
Okay. So assuming we get to, you know, like, let's just say we get to a low level of transmission as defined by the CDC, and that means we can go without masks until something changes again, but all other mitigations stay in place? Is that how you see it? Until another metric is met?
Right. That's, that's why I recommend is that we still maintain the three feet social distancing and, and the sanitizing where buildings, I think we still maintain those, you know? And I don't think there is much concern about those other mitigations. I think the masking is the one that seems to be one that's most concerning. And so...
I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. And again, the 70% vaccinated, I mean, that's something that the board can discuss and see. You know, I think that definitely, you know, we, we haven't collected the data yet from our students at the junior high and high school, but we can get that and we can see if we're trending better than the rest of the county and we're approaching 70%. We're at 70%. The elementary level, obviously with, they're just going to become eligible sometime this fall. So, you know, we could be hitting a low level of transmission, but because those students have just become eligible, the likelihood of reaching that 70% threshold is not very high. So that's something the board can talk about if, you know, they want some flexibility with that.
Right.
At those other grade levels.
I'm just going to, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Laura.
Well, I just wanted, I had just another clarifying question. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. The, you have this as a sub-bullet, so the 70% of students and 75...
The, you have this as a sub-bullet, so the 70% of students and 75, 70% of staff vaccinated, that is a CDC recommendation-
Right.
-that we are following. Those percentages came from-
Came from-
The CDC.
Came from the FAQ.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, so not just some random number-
Right, right.
-that you landed on, that's-
That's their, their threshold, yeah.
Just making sure that's, that I interpreted that correctly. And Jess, I know you-
Yeah, my only, like, honestly, that's the only piece of the opening plan that I'm just not ready to commit to yet, since we have no idea what our rates are of vaccination for our students yet. And I imagine there'll be a little bit more hesitancy to vaccinate at the elementary level, and so I just don't want the threshold to be unrealistic, if it's, you know, if there truly is a low level of transmission, because I think when there was a low level of transmission earlier in the summer, many of us were more open to masks optional anyway, even when that group couldn't be vaccinated. So that, for me, that's the only piece I want to just talk a little bit more about, not even necessarily at this meeting, but gather more information, and just remain flexible on revisiting what that threshold is and what those metrics are, and just knowing that can evolve. But, but I support the recommendation, though, to, you know, everything else, so.
I have a question, that's 70%, do you think that's because they're like to reach herd immunity? That's kind of how I take it.
To, I'm sorry?
To reach herd immunity?
That's, that's part of it, and I think also it's, you know, part of the, the plan, you want to encourage vaccination, because the two things that have been most effective have been masks and vaccination, and so I think that's one way to encourage vaccination. If you reach this threshold, then we can start, you know, going back to no masks. So I think that's part of it, is to encourage the vaccination.
Because I would feel hesitant to lower it if we were not going to reach herd immunity, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm, of everything you've presented, the, the mask metrics, I feel like are the area where I, I need a little more reflection personally. You know, we saw this for the first time, you know, yesterday, basically. I know you're just coming off a meeting. We intentionally moved this meeting up so we could make, give parents a decision and, you know, be responsive to the needs of the community, and I think we can make a decision on the opening plan tonight, but, you know, I know I'm feeling a little bit like maybe we need to process that portion of it a little bit more, and potentially, you know, you'll get more information in the meantime, in terms of what other metrics and sort of step-down strategy we could have at different levels. I mean, if, I don't know how everybody else is feeling, if no one else is feeling that way, we certainly can go ahead and vote on that tonight as well, but I would be in favor of tabling that decision for the evening, the mask metrics.
The metrics, yes.
I, I think we should at least at some point in the future, you know, review it, obviously.
Yep.
To make sure it's still a pro.
Right.
And for me, this is, that's like the piece that's going to evolve throughout the school year, just like everything else, because CDC might change, you know, their percentages, their thresholds, depending on how the Delta variant evolves, and all of these other things. This is, I have only one more comment before we, you know, and I, before we make a decision, I don't know if we're close to it, or, and if you had any comments. You know, it's, it's a frustrating position to be in right now, especially since we were at our last meeting without masks. I don't think anybody wants to be wearing a mask right now, we're doing what we need to do for public health and for safety. And, you know, I'm, I'm not a medical expert, but, you know, the alarmingly high number of cases, positive cases right now that are among unvaccinated people is frustrating. And so just encouraging, just like the schools, for people to get vaccinated. I, I just have to say that, I can't not say it.
Yeah, so in terms of the, the piece, did Adina want to say something just now?
Adina, were you trying to chime in?
To get back on, I think what, Kevin, you were asking about the 70%. And for, for, you know, I'm ready to whatever the board wants to do with that decision, but I want to speak as a physician about that decision. We're taking something scientifically stated for vaccines, and we've seen the outcome of not obtaining that herd immunity or getting close to that 70%.
So Kevin, if you caught that, can you repeat it for us, because I did not-
Remove COVID, I guess, from our lap.
She's still talking? Sorry.
I, I think I caught some, I mean, what she, what she said is that-
I took a pause.
What I-
Adina, we could barely hear you.
Yeah, I can't continue, I'll try to speak louder.
Please do.
Can you say it again, Adina, sorry?
So, speaking of that 70%, yes, I said I wanted to speak as a physician about that 70%.
Okay.
Attaining that, that's not, you could probably tell that's something that's been touted for a long time. To have the vaccine work, we have to get to herd immunity, and we've been, we can see the, if in a pocket of unvaccinated, the virus can change, make a variant of itself, and then start to spread. So that's where that number comes from, 70%. So we can, you know, the medical professionals are saying, reach that percent before you take masks off and you change your mitigation. So I'm, you know, that's something that we need to attain, that's what that number is for, and why we need to, you know, encourage more to attain that, so we're not going back and forth, mask off, mask on. We have to try to reach that, and that's why, you know, that's the best. The CDC are waiting for them to lower that, is basically saying, okay, we're okay with possibly another, you know, outbreak in unvaccinated. So we just have to think about that as we, you know, we look to get our numbers, that shouldn't change the 70% metric that we're trying to reach, even though we may see that our numbers are 40%. We still run a risk of spread, and that's what we're trying to deter.
Right.
Got it.
Did we all hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an important comment, so, okay.
So, anyway, and that's actually perfect, because what I was going to say was, I think we were all saying that when it comes to the metrics, that's the, that's the one thing that tonight we're, we're, we're going to push out a little further, right? And we'll vote on the rest of the plan, and that's what the, that's what the vote tonight is going to be. Is that correct?
Is everybody comfortable with that, I guess? I want to look around and make sure that's not, I mean, I'm, I'm honestly fine either way, I just don't want to make a decision and then have to rethink a decision, so, which we probably will be doing anyway.
I think even if we, if we gave the green light on everything right now, I think that we would still be revisiting mask metrics anyway.
Right, that's right.
Regardless, and so I think, you know-
That was going to be my follow-up.
I think we can separate it out, knowing that we're coming back to, or just vote on it all, knowing that we're coming back to mask metrics no matter what, probably at every single meeting.
That's correct.
Right? With our updates, we'll get those updates.
Right.
One question I didn't ask, that I think I asked earlier, was about communication about vaccination rates, because I think if that's something that we're tying masks, no masks to, to be really transparent with the community about that is important, so will that be part of regular updates to the community?
Right, that'll, that'll be part of our regular updates to the community, and also, remember, we had, we had a COVID tracker, that will include that as part of the dashboard, the percent of vaccinated.
So when it comes to the metrics, I just, what I heard tonight was, we will adjust as the CDC adjusts, and the IDPH, and DuPage County, that's what I heard, and that's what I'm going to be voting on tonight. So, what I want to, want to say was, when I left this last meeting, the meeting last time, I had this sort of overwhelming feeling like, I, I now have to be an expert in all of these studies, and all of this information, in order to be on the school district, Unified School District 201 Board. And it was a little, it was overwhelming, and I, and I thought, who, who do I trust? And, and then it occurred to me, a day or two after, that I trust the CDC, I trust the IDPH, and I trust DuPage County. I don't have to be an expert in this, and I trust Superintendent Carey to listen to what those people say, and put a plan together, like he did, that addresses exactly all of those concerns. And after tonight, I'm going to trust the stakeholders in this community to help us all implement this plan. That's it.
Including reaching 70% vaccination rates, I mean, honestly, that's got to be a part of it, otherwise we're never going to get out of this mess.
Right.
I just had one more comment. I think it is worth publicly sharing that the board did receive two petitions from the community, one in favor of masking, and the other in favor of masking choice. Just so we're really transparent about that, we did receive those petitions. Both petitions had, it wasn't quite equal, but it was essentially equal, about 150. One was just under 150, one was just over 150 signatures from the community. So we are very aware that the community is divided on this issue. We are very aware of the very deep and personal stakes that there are for this decision. And, you know, we have taken all of that along with the CDC, IDPH, DuPage County, and Mr. Carey's recommendations into consideration deeply, before we place any vote tonight or ever on the subject. So I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge that we received those petitions and have heard the voices of the community. So if I am, like, I want to make sure we do the right thing here, I think we came around to we're voting on both topics tonight, knowing that we will likely have to revisit both topics on an ongoing basis.
So what are the two, two topics?
The two topics are the reopening plan and the mask metrics.
Okay.
So are we ready?
So if I can jump in real quick?
Yep.
Just to call out a couple of things and reiterate, you know, the masking metrics to Jess and Carlos and, and Laura's point, are very similar to what we did all last year at every school board meeting, which was, take a look, see what's working, tweak as needed, and I know and appreciate that the administration will continue this year to be open to adjustments to that. We really hit a stride last year when Mr. Carey and the administration started tracking our local metrics, and Team Westmont got to see how exceptional we were doing, and I think that really helped the community as a whole connect, and remember that we are all neighbors, and we all know each other, and it's a beauty of a small community that we can have these impacts in these small communities by, by, by seeing what we're doing together. And I appreciate that work last year from Mr. Carey and the team, and I look forward to it this year as we keep going forward with vaccinations. I too would like to see those metrics tweaked, and specifically, I'd like to see them tweaked with some local information in them. We are part of DuPage County, which has some of the highest vaccination rate in the state right now, but we want to keep driving that, and like I said, I thought, I thought the community really connected last year when we started looking at our local averages, and we saw those weeks, we're doing, we were doing so much better than our neighbors, which was awesome. And I think we can connect with that again this year, not necessarily, you know, I want to see that vaccination rate go up, but, but giving people something to connect to that might be different for different families. So I, I appreciate that. And then also just to call out some things that as a school board, it, it's a fine line for us to kind of get into, and that's what happens in each specific school. We do have to adjust and potentially tweak some of our metrics for the different schools based on the different age ranges, but as far as the children's specific daily schedules of mask breaks and bathroom breaks and lunches and whatnot, those are not, those are not things that you're not, that you're going to hear from the school board meetings, because it is, it is very on the dance floor for us. So as parents who might need to understand their children's days in a little bit more detail, I really recommend that you connect with your administrations within the buildings to get that information, and, and allow the school board to do what we do best, which is administer and allow, or govern, and allow the administrators to do what they do best, which is run the school. So I want to thank everybody for the incredible work over the summer and through last year, and say that I'm looking forward to this year, and I'm looking forward to, at some point, our kids being, our kids having as normal a day as possible, which is, is different for each school, but as normal a day as possible is our goal, and our kids in school every single day is incredibly important, so thank you guys for that. And yeah, that's, I'm ready to vote.
All right, great, unless there's other comments, we're going to move to action items. So the next item on the agenda is action items. The first is the approval of the 2021-2022 opening plan. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2021-2022 opening plan as presented. So-
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yeah.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Stuckaty?
Yes.
Number two, approval of mask metrics. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the masking metrics as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Stuckaty?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
No.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
No.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover? Ms. Hoover?
She dropped off the Zoom.
We must have lost her, we still have a, we still have a-
Yeah, she has four votes.
Yeah, we still have four votes, so, that motion carries. We don't have any other agenda items, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we didn't have public comment at the end, are we taking public comment?
Hello?
Usually special board means we have one, public comment, a regular board means we have one at the beginning and then-
Can we? We can't add it to the agenda?
We adjourn, yeah.
Okay, okay, so we've motioned to adjourn. Did that happen?
So moved.
So moved. Okay. Second.
All right, so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned.